Today is February 29, 2016. I call the meeting of Monmouth County Commission to order. Let the record reflect that Commissioner Bloom, Commissioner Hawkins, and myself, Commissioner Callen are present. I want everyone please rise for a moment of silent meditation and pledge to the flag. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Be pen. Okay. All right. First order is comments from the public. We, if anyone's interested in making a comment, please rise, state your name and address. We open the comments from the public. Anyone want to make any comments?
If we have any comments, is there going to be sections of the meeting or can we just make them right now?
Now would be the time to make them.
Okay.
Unless you're a party to anything on the agenda, you have to make it during public comment. You may or may not be granted the right to speak later upon. That'd be totally up to basically the chair and/or the agreement of the commissioners.
Okay. So if I wanted to speak about one of the levies coming up, do I need that?
Are you a party to one of the levies?
No.
Then you should speak right now.
Okay. My name is Dale Downey. I'm 1171 Keywood Pike in Morgantown, West Virginia. I just wanted to speak about one of the levies that I read in the paper yesterday, which has to do with the baseball fields, the softball, and everything like that. And I have a real passion for that. I was a baseball coach for my kids for 13 years. I played softball till I was 42-years-old here at White Park. I was a basketball coach for five years and I have a real interest in bringing kids up in sports. But I don't know whether I can say I'm against this levy. In my day, as a parent and as the kids, we went to the ball fields and we put our share of work in. We built the dugouts down in Westover Park. My team carried the block. I laid the block. We put the ross on. And I just feel that if you want your kids to play ball or want them to play softball, they should pay for that. If we have people in the community that don't have the money to pay for their kids to do that, maybe it should be done like the bands at University High or Morgantown High. That people who can't pay for that, then you work your time off. Or ask for donations. I mean, I am not a grandfather or anybody because I don't have any grandkids, but if somebody couldn't play ball or something and it cost them $300 a year, if they would come and ask, you know, would you want to sponsor this person? I would do that. Give me the opportunity to do that. Don't take my property taxes, which need to be done for something else, and take it and put towards these entities. And that's kind of the way I feel about it. Like I said, I'm very passionate in bringing these kids up, but I am upset in giving everybody something to do. If I want to do it, I'll pay for it. And I think these parents ought to be responsible. They send their kids to pro-performance and everything else to be better. If they want to get them into these sports and if kids want to go here to college and play softball, then you ought to pay for your right to do that. So that's just my opinion on that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any further public comment?
My name is Joyce Royce. I live 1016 Louise Avenue in the city. Yeah, I'm kind of bothered by the idea that kids who can't afford or whose parents can't afford would not have the opportunity to play ball. There is a volunteer aspect and that's good. But the other thing that I have, I know that the public comments section used to be at the end of the meetings. And I noticed, I watched the last meeting on TV and I noticed that the public comments section was up front and you changed that at some point. And I noticed that one person asked us to leave after the fact and you all gave him permission to do that. I really think it would be better to have the public comments section near the end because I might want to comment on some of the conversation that takes place amongst you all about the levies, but I don't know what that conversation is at this point. That's just, so I don't have anything about that yet because I don't know what you all are going to say.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Any further public comment? Hearing none, are the clear the comments from the public? Session closed. I've been requested to move things around and that's fine. The first item on the--
Yes, I may.
Yes.
I know I'm not on the agenda, but I would at least like to have this written into the record that I did seek an ethics opinion and it is perfectly acceptable for Commissioner Bloom to do what he did. I would suggest that both, all of us in the future, this was not done as, and I explained to Tom later, this is not a personal attack. I wanted to make sure that the recreational levy was not flawed by participation. So I think that if we follow this procedure that I did follow when I wanted to retain the presidency of the historical board, I did seek an opinion on it as long as the opinion is, as long as you don't profit, and that's the same opinion, as long as you don't profit from doing so or your spouse, you are allowed to continue on these boards. Then I asked commission, do you have a problem with me? And they acknowledged then knowing that I was doing that. I think that was just a breakdown in communication that, you know, that the acknowledgement was not done and therefore the opinion was, you know, and no umbrage. And I hope that, you know, I only have the one copy Janet, so if you'll take that. That was from Kimberly D. Weber and she did go ahead and ask around just to see if there was any other--
And could you share that copy to all this, please?
Yeah.
Considering I've not seen it.
Okay. All right. Do you want to speak?
Well, my question is, did we get, before we get to the next agenda item, we received a communique. I just learned, well, we all got the letter, so I'm really confused of what's going on. So could I ask her to read the communique that all three of us got last night?
We're not to that agenda item yet. Let me announce the agenda item. I was asked--
Oh, okay.
I was asked to move things around. Consideration of Fairs and Festivals Levy. Who's here to speak on that? Would you all come forward and identify yourselves so we have the record? Please identify yourself and who's going to be the chief speaker or all three of you can speak. I'm pretty liberal when it comes to that. I always want to make sure everyone has a chance to state their position.
My name's Amy Blake and I'm with the Mon County Fair in Treasure.
My name's Ethan Warren with the Clay District Fair Association.
Rob Maxwell, President of Mon County Fair.
Okay, very good. Who's going to start out?
Go ahead. You can't.
No problem. We have a levy that we'd like to propose for your, to be put on the ballot, if we could, please.
Please explain.
May I see it, please?
Explain in detail.
The levy would help out the three fairs, the Clay District Fair, the Monmouth County Fair, and the Patel District Fair. The funds would be distributed, 20,000 for the clay, 50,000 for the Mon, and 20,000 for the Patel. The monies would go to, most of it would go to upkeep and maintenance of the existing facilities.
Do you have, have you, your breakdown, you have all that laid out?
Yes, sir.
And verified?
Yes.
With the property taxes?
Yes, sir.
Or the property assessments, I should say. Okay, that's based on?
Yeah, and that would take, you know, for the next five years and of course taking effect next year. We're just asking for your approval to put this on the ballot.
Well, just to re-clarify everything. We as a commission could have, as a school board, and we're no different than the school board. Matter of fact, I was listening to an interesting debate on the House floor about the fact that the counties, when they adopt these particular levies like this, cannot promote or use the funds, time, or money to promote any particular levy. Now, the commission, like the school board, could have chose to put together their own levy and included all these in one. But it was my belief, and neither commissioner voted to overturn the chair's opinion, that it was improper to pick and choose. Our constitutional responsibility is to fund the constitutional offices. That's it. We have no obligation to fund any of these outside agencies, no obligation to fund what I call the quality of life things. There is no constitutional requirement to do so. We have done for 40-plus years, this commission, of course, there were different people on it, of course, this commission chose to use the coal severance fund to pay for quality of life agencies and efforts. That money is gone. It's not a budget question. I heard someone make a comment dysfunctional budget. Well, first off, we're not even into budget. It's a matter of the money is no longer there to the state or to the counties. The governor chose to, across the board, cut everybody. We chose, and the state, as many other counties, waited till after Christmas into January, some into February, to announce these major budget cuts. We as a commission thought that was not right. That was not fair. That was not right. That's why we instituted a holdback, not a cut, a holdback, to see what kind of funds would come in through coal severance or possible other funds. And there are some, there are some funds that I think we can tap into. That's been my primary focus for the last two months. When we found the shortfall is different ways that we could tap in other funds. That it was, it was not our, it was not, it was our belief that we hold back and then see and try to fund those emergencies areas. Because it's not, it's not a good thing to have to plan your budget and then change it. That's what happened to us. We had a budget, but the money's not coming in on a budget. Now, some, some areas I know still haven't announced. They just waited till the March budget period and I know what they're going to do, they're going to cut everybody. That's not right. This commission said, we're not going to do that. We're going to tell the people upfront as to what the difficulty is. And we were going to allow the entities, and that's all we decide here. That is all we decide here as a commission, the entities to put together what they believe would be a quality of life, public service, submit it, put it together in proper form, and come to us for ballot access. That's all we vote on. We don't vote on whether this is a good levy. We don't vote on whether it is, you know, the right group. We don't vote on any of those issues. What we vote on is, are you an entity that represents a public service or a quality of life agency to provide a public service? And is it that where you want to use that money, does it fit in the area that public funds have been used before or could be used in the future? That's it. Ballot access. That's all we vote on. So I just wanted to make that clear because it's got distorted into something that it's not. We chose not to endorse any particular levy and felt that it was much better to have, and I know the newspaper talked about all too many levies. No, now wait a second. You could put all the levies into one big levy or you could divide them out. It isn't how many levies out there because it gives the citizen out there, gives that taxpayer to make that very choice, like you just, you, sir, was just talking about. Like you were talking about in this room. It gives you the choice. Yes. I built the dugouts for my daughter and softball. I know what you're talking about. We went out, we put the block up, we put the roof on and everything. I understand that. But our, our position here, and the way I've described it from day one, is to provide your entity with ballot access. And I, if it's proper and it goes forward, that's what you get from my, from my seat.
Let it, let him go first.
Do you have anything?
No.
Okay. A couple things. You used the correct word. When I talked with Charleston and/or Ash, he said, our obligation, exactly what you said, but you used the correct word, proper format. And that's, I interpret that a little differently than you do, but I do have some questions. Again, one of the concerns I have immediately is, we were given the levies plenty of time to review. Until now, I've not even seen this levy. So I want you to know I'm a little concerned about that because I'm trying to figure out questions to ask because I asked the other question. So please, it is personal, I'm just trying to figure this out, but I guess--
We're better with you.
Yeah. Who wrote the levy? Just so I know.
Combined between us.
Yeah.
Three of you?
Yeah.
Okay. And no one else?
The representatives from the three, from the three organizations.
Representatives, okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Patel was not here, but they have other things.
Okay, good. Okay. Was there a reason why you chose only three fairs and festivals?
Those are the three that spoke up.
Spoke up, okay. Again, I will just pass out within my limited time of 45 minutes. I, I'm just concerned, I just want you to know that, and again, this isn't for or against, it's just something that worries me, that there's the Trium Valley, the Daybrook, the Wadestown, the Wine and Jazz Festival, the Mountain Fest, the Arts Walk Festival, the Garner Winter Music Festival, the Irish Road Bowling Festival, the Soul Fuel Festival, and the Mon County Arts Festival that are not in this. And I have a concern because when I see a county levy, it's supposed to try, you know, my goal would be to fund, you know, the entire area. Okay? And that's just a question, a concern I have. But I guess I have a bigger question and I want, I want some clarification. Rob, you were part of that initial group of the parks and fairs, I mean, the parks and trails.
Yes.
Okay, so there were nine people there. So in no way was the Mon County Fair excluded representation, is that correct?
I mean, we were a part of it to begin with, but then we were pretty much, I want to say--
They voted not to put you in?
Pretty much, yeah.
Okay. No, that's very fair.
Not to be included.
Yeah, not to be included.
Yeah, we were asked to not be included.
Okay. And I want that stated because it was clearly proposed by another commissioner that you were excluded. You were never excluded, but when the nine voted, but you didn't object when we all voted on the recommendations of the final. You never--
I would never, how do I want to say this?
Yeah.
No, I would, no, I would not stop someone else's levy.
Okay.
I mean, no, I wouldn't stop the fire department's levy, the, you know, the countless levies that have been proposed to you, I wouldn't stop a one of them.
Okay.
I mean, everybody in this county has the right to their opinions and, you know, this is just my small opinion.
Okay. But that group chosen, did it chose it because, if I'm correct, it was a generic levy for parks and recreation and not one specific? That was what we had discussed, is that not correct? So it wasn't going to one specific event, it was going to the general? And I have another person here to, also I could ask that question to. It was to the general of the parks or the trail?
I'm going to call a point over here. These gentlemen and lady are not on trial here and they're not, I'm not going to allow them to be subject to some sort of cross-examination. Well, it gets, no, listen.
Sure.
I wanted not to have to deal with this. I'm deeply disturbed because you just stated that you were one of the nine that voted as to what to be excluded and not excluded. That is the problem. You have a built-in conflict because you have already voted to exclude this group from your parks and recreation. Now, if you wanted to participate and you wanted to take first thing, the right thing, and I didn't want to get into this, but you got me into it because I'm not going to stand here and see people abused.
I wasn't abused.
Yes, you were.
No, I disagree.
Well, you can disagree. That's my position with the chair. You can make a motion to have me strike that, but I'm not going to strike it unless the two of you vote against me. That is the conflict. You have already picked and choo, chosen who's going to be included and who's not been included. You have an ethics, ethical obligation to expose that before you vote on one of these levies. In my, and this is the chair's opinion, you are disqualified and should never have voted on any of these levies because you chose to be a part of a specific levy, you took an active part in it, you voted for, for who was going to be included and who's not going to be included, and then you come here as a commissioner, failed to disclose that conflict, failed to state it to anyone that there was a potential conflict, failed to state the fact that you disagreed with the chair's opinion and went and got an opinion from Ora Ash, and Ora Ash is a nice fellow and everything, but I disagree with him 70% of the time. And I base my ethics on myself and my reading of the law. I do not believe any commissioner has the right to go out and promote these things. We are no better than the school board. I heard that argument in the legislature just this past Friday and Saturday. That very argument, the county commission has no more authority and power, no more ability to go out and do things. We are a living body, just like the school board is a living body. Now, it's my position that, given on what you just stated, not only did you participate, you voted, you have, you have removed yourself from at least a perception, at least a perception, you removed yourself from the ability to vote as a commissioner on any of these items. That's my position and that's the way I rule. And if you want to file a motion to overturn the chair's position, go ahead.
I believe the chair is incorrect. Specifically, I went to the special levy and bonds elections, which I was required to do, and though you had your opinion, and I respect your opinion, I wanted to get the official opinion from the state and that was from Ora Ash, and I did that with a person in the room. And specifically, I will read again, that the only thing that a county commissioner cannot do is not use public funds, time, or materials to advocate the passage of the issue. In this discussion, we specifically asked, am I permitted to help and get involved with it? The answer was yes. Could I vote on it? Yes. So I didn't do anything different than what the law required me to do. And again, I apologize if you felt that I was threatening. My argument was going to be, and I want to show you, that, yes, did we discuss it? Nine people discussed it and we decided to--
Point of order. We're talking about my decision now. You're not talking to these people. My ruling is that you have no right to vote on things. That has nothing to do with what you want answered. The fact of the matter is, is you are now acting as a commissioner who has already stated that you have a building conflict because you previously voted to exclude these people.
Okay, I'll challenge the chair so we can vote on it.
Do we have a second? Do we have a second?
Does it require a second?
Requires a second. Do we have a second?
May I?
Uh-uh.
What are you voting on?
He's challenged my ruling that he does not have the right to vote on this because he's already announced his, his prejudice as to why he would vote against these levies. Hearing no second, your motion is denied. Mr. Hawkins?
Your next. Would move to accept the levy as presented by the Fairs and Festivals Committee, with subject to any minor reservation. We have made this motion the same if there is a minor revision that has to be made after review at the state level.
I'll second that. I have a motion in second.
I have a point of order.
What's your point of order?
It's written incorrectly, just so you're aware.
Well, you just--
You just asked me to--
All right. You have no right to make a point of order because his motion, as all the others, you stood here and you questioned his land ownership. I mean, that was the most ridiculous thing that I ever heard whatsoever. The buses don't own the land. The libraries don't own the land. It was such a strained argument that I was so deeply upset and I didn't want to get into it because what's passed is passed. The motion was that any procedural corrections as required by the auditor's office would be done. Was that not in the motion?
Correct.
Thank you. Motion in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Used baseball in West Virginia Botanic Garden levy.
I was here last week on Wednesday--
Please identify your name and--
I apologize. My name is Vader Giga-Mock. And I was here last Wednesday on the youth baseball and Botanic Garden levy. Since that time and since the 1-1 vote to not allow that levy to go forward, I've been in talks with the president of the Botanic Garden and explained to him that I did not want to go forward today with Botanic Garden tied to that Vote Park levy, if you will.
May I make a point?
Yes, sir.
Based on my ruling, that levy passed last week because Commissioner Bloom had no right to vote. A majority of the commissioners present and informed was present, there was 1-0 on the vote. So if you want to go with the levy, fine. If you want to withdraw it, everyone has a right to withdraw it.
If I may speak just a little bit to that point.
Sure, go ahead.
So Mr. Johnson, the president of the Botanic Garden, I didn't want to come forward again today because it failed before and for the reasons stated, and I won't go through that, but I didn't want to have it together. As far as the baseball levy itself goes, I wasn't going to present it today because of information that I've gathered since I was here last. I, I felt that what we were bringing was appropriate, but Vote Park didn't actually vote on it. Vote Park's never voted on that particular levy request that I brought on Wednesday and that's, I suppose--
Ernestville didn't vote, Ernestville Community Center did not vote on the library levy and they, a major houser of the library. And funds were gone out there. That's nothing to do. That, that whole discussion, I listened to it, was so strained and so off the wall, had no basis in fact or anything is what we as a commission has a responsibility to do, which was to provide the citizens of this county ballot access. That's it.
Well, I can't speak to your procedure. If, if it's your view that it was already passed, then there's nothing--
Passed, but you have a right, but you have a right to withdraw it at any time. Any of these entities have a right to withdraw it. The whole argument against that levy was strained and it, a clear conflict of interest. All you have to do is listen to the debate, as to the conflict that he was gonna stop you, because you, because he voted against you before.
All I can say is, I'll let that stand, then, because Bow Park has not voted against this levy request that we made. They haven't voted for it, but they haven't voted against it.
Have you heard any objections?
The board has not met. They didn't have time to meet. So the board can't speak without a board vote. That's all I can say for...
But my, my recall was that you send it out to everybody.
I sent it to their executive director, and then on Thursday or Friday, I let all of them know that there would be this special meeting today. As soon as I got Renata's agenda, I sent it out within a few hours to all of the board members that I could reach at Bow Park. But all I can say is, they haven't met, they haven't ruled on it, I'm not gonna speak for them, other than to say that, as a citizen, I'd like to see the fields, I'd like to see the voters decide. Mr. Callen?
That's what it's all about.
The very first thing I said when I sat here, and the other commissioners will recall this, I actually heard you on the radio the week before, say, "Let the voters decide." And that's when I came in here, and I sat down here, and I said, "That's a great idea. Let's let the voters decide." It's not a Bow Park call, it's not your call, it's not Oregon Town Pony Baseball's call, it's the voters' call.
It's not a made-up groups' call, nine people deciding either. I'm gonna, do you want to check with Botanic Garden? You have the right to remove this levy at any point before it goes on the ballot.
Yeah, they can do it at any times.
Before it goes on the ballot. I'm not sure what the date is, I think it's like the 15th of March or something like that. You have a right to withdraw it.
I would, I would rather that if what happened on Wednesday was an official action based on you being the chair, then I'm gonna stand on that, and I'm not gonna ask to change that.
All right, thank you. That's all I need. I am, I am declaring that the baseball and Botanic Garden levy passed, a majority of the commissioners voting for, because Commissioner Bloom should have abstained, because he had a building conflict.
Point of order.
1-0.
May I have a point of order?
So declared.
A point of order. I don't think you have the right, and I'm gonna challenge chair, you can't change a vote that was already taken and you weren't there. That is totally...
I'm not changing a vote.
I'm talking...
You have a building conflict, sir.
There is no conflict, Ora Ash made it very clear, that that is what we were supposed to do, and whether you thought it was a conflict or not, you can't change a vote that was already taken. You've really superseded the law, and I'm really concerned about now the question of the two levies being even legal. I'm very sorry. That's, that's my comment. That's all I'm gonna say.
The, not superseding anything, I'm, it's been very clear that you have a building conflict of interest, and you should have notified and abstained from this.
You were aware of it on the 17th.
And...
Excuse me, but you voted for it when it was on the 17th, Mr. President. It was brought to the attention, everyone was aware that I was involved on the 17th. So coming back on the 24th after the fact, and now making a ruling after a vote has been taken, I think sets a really bare precedent, and that's all I'm gonna say.
Before I step aside, I just want to make clear why I stated I'd rather leave it where it was on Wednesday. I don't have the authority of the Botanic Garden to say to, to not let that go through. In other words, I can't, I don't want to harm the Botanic Garden. They came in here with me, they believed they were part of a levy request that involved baseball. The only thing I, the only communication that I've received from the Botanic Garden is the same one that each of you has received, and that is, they don't want to be on a standalone levy. So I don't have the authority to ask you to withdraw mine now, because it impacts a party that's not even here. So that's why. I don't want to touch Wednesday. You all handle that the way you want to. I just wanted to say that. I don't want to harm the Botanic Garden.
Would you, would it be okay to put the letter, since it would be public, to, Mr. President, could you read the letter for, into the minutes, so it, so everyone understands the letter he's talking about?
Yeah, I understand that. Go ahead, read it then.
Thank you.
This is an email correspondence from William Johnson, president of the Board of Directors, West Virginia Botanic Garden. "The Board of Directors of the West Virginia Botanic Garden appreciates the commission's interest in reconsidering the proposed youth baseball and West Virginia Botanic Garden levy proposal. Our understanding is that the youth baseball program has withdrawn from this proposal. The Botanic Gardens Board does not believe it is in our best interest to pursue an independent levy proposal at this time, and therefore, we request that this proposal be removed from consideration. Should the opportunity arise, we look forward to making the case that funding for facilities and programs such as youth baseball and the Botanic Gardens be included in future parks and recreation levy proposals. We encourage the commission in the future to provide sufficient lead time and notice to all interested parties to allow for full consideration of all options. Sincerely, William R. Johnson."
Thank you.
As such, I can't withdraw.
Well, that's exactly, wait a second. That's exactly what you said, that they would not proceed independently.
Correct.
That's exactly what his letter said. Okay. Now, I've ruled that Commissioner Bloom should not have voted on any of these levies based on his involvement. I assisted in answering procedural questions to the library. Commissioner Hawkins answered procedural questions to the, to the volunteer fire departments. That is not what I'm talking about, and that's not what Ora Ash is talking about. Where the conflict arises, and I'm gonna state it again, the conflict arises is a small group that they don't own any of the facilities, they don't own any of those facilities that they brought that levy in on. Small group of nine people, in which this commissioner took an active part in deciding who would be excluded and who would be included, creates an inability to independently procedurally. He could have accepted as procedurally, but when I watched that strained argument that had nothing to do with anything, he said illegal five times, and there wasn't one illegal thing about anything that was presented, at least five times. His bias and prejudice was so clear, it smacked me in the face, and I said, "I've gotta do something about that. I will not stand by and allow that kind of conduct." My ruling is, he is disqualified from all the votes, and I would appreciate a motion if the other commissioner agrees with me.
I would say no.
I second.
This is a discussion?
Discussion.
First of all, you are incorrect with the facts. The nine people came out of the meeting that the three county commissioners recommended. We came and made a subcommittee. Out of that subcommittee, the nine people volunteered, well, eight people, and I said I would help out. Yes, I did. So the levy clearly was not in any way that we owned the property, it was done in the basis that the county commission had requested the community to come up with areas that the county would be involved with. So clearly, to say that we weren't involved in any way and put it together is totally false. We did this meeting to try and come up with a solution. I thought we came up with a great solution, and again, I want it very clear that I, as much as I try and respect your judgment, we don't supersede the special levy and bond elections, and that's the rules that I followed, and I will continue to follow, and I truly believe that you are stepping on very dangerous grounds on this ruling. You ruled on something that, and told people what, how I was and what I was doing, which was incorrect. I asked questions, very simply. The questions I asked was, did they have the authority, or did they own the property that they were requesting funds for? And the answer was no. So, you know, so again, I continue to say that, you know, I'm very disappointed in your ruling, I believe that you've overreached your rule, your boundaries, but, you know, there's nothing more, I will abide by what, you know, the commissioners do. Thank you.
The, the statement was made that you voted to exclude people. That is something totally different. You, do you have anything to say?
No.
Could you add anything?
No, I, I will stand by what I stated before. I do feel that there was some exclusionary activity, and we are seeking to make sure that all is treated and everybody being treated fairly. Again, the citizens of this county should vote as they see fit to make their decision. It was our opinion, and I, what I, what we were to make sure, that you followed the procedure on this, not to stand in judgment of its righteousness.
A motion to second all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion passed. The, the motion to adjourn. Move to adjourn.
I have a question.
Second, what's your question?
My question, can I just have the mayor of Westover just to respond to say, if there was exclusion or...
No, no, no. The issue's done. I don't call the mayor into this, this has nothing to do with the mayor.
He was in the meeting.
You do not call the mayor or anyone else. I said no.
Okay, so...
I'm not gonna put that mayor on that kind of spot. It's not fair to the mayor. He's one of our great attendees, and he's one that really believes in, in government working together, so I'm not gonna put him or anyone else in that kind of spot. That motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
We're adjourned.